This is high tech right here.
What's that game you play?
Tetris? No. Jenga. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm gonna make sure. Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna make sure.
A little bit more height.
Yep.
This is high tech right here. This is high tech right here. This is high tech right here.
What's that game you play?
Tetris? No. Jenga. I don't know.
Where Jeff is, you see his whole head?
Yeah.
How about that?
Nobody's gonna be standing up over here. Is it too high?
Yeah, we're just gonna let people sit in the chairs. Instead of... Otherwise, we're gonna lose our committee members. How about that? How's that? Yes, we are recording.
All right, at 5:03 PM, we'll call this meeting to order. Roll call whenever you're ready.
Chairperson Andy Devonport. Vice Chair Lydia Johns. Commissioner Tamara Robertson. Council liaison Chris Drummer. Commissioner Josh Irwin. Commissioner Chris Sun Gang. Commissioner Thomas Baum. And Commissioner Justin Blitzen. President.
Suzanne, other than the people that are here, are there any public comments that you are going to share with us? You think it needs to be read or something? All right, very good. Just so the general public knows, good evening, and thank you all for coming out. We appreciate you all taking the time to come and share with us, so thank you for doing that. This evening, we're discussing two items. One is a minimum lot size, and that will be the first item in our agenda. And it's almost as if we're having two separate meetings, so we'll call that item to order, and we will discuss and take appropriate action on that. And that's when we'll hear comments on that, and then we will close that item. And then separately, the second issue that we're gonna discuss is short-term rentals. So we will then open the floor up to short-term rentals. So I'm just letting you know that in advance, so that when we call for public comments, if you'd like to speak about short-term rentals, that's gonna be the second item on the agenda. Okay, before we get to that, reports from officers and council liaisons. Anything? Nothing to report? Outstanding. Suzanne, anything else that I'm missing? Very good. In that case, we will proceed to the regular calendar. Item number one, public hearing to consider recommendations to city council. He adopts a new ordinance amending various sections of chapter 155 subdivisions of the Code of Ordinances, City of Wood Creek, Texas. The same being known as the subdivision ordinance. For the purpose of implementing an amendment increasing minimum lot size requirements for wastewater and water connection for these subdivision applications. I don't know that many of you in the audience have this, so I'm gonna read it just briefly. This was something put together by council member Heinz, and it gives kind of a good overview of what this issue is. So it says, currently, we have standards on the minimum requirements for the size of a residential structure, garage space, parking, and maximum impervious coverage. But we lack minimum lot size designations in our residential zoning. Right now, to determine the minimum lot size allowed for each zoning SF1 through 6, you have to calculate it using the minimum build and impervious coverage requirements. Kay Fries, and that is the city engineering people, first brought this irregularity to the attention of council member Heinz in 2021. And then city zoning regulations typically designate a minimum lot size for residential zoning purposes. So we've been calculating minimum lot sizes in the past, and the recommendation is to establish minimum lot sizes for this point going forward. So at this time, if anyone has anything that they would like to share with us about that, we will entertain public comments.
Yes, I would.
You can just sit right there.
Or stand right there.
Well, my husband and I own three lots on the golf course on Pebble Brook, and then we own a lot on Wilson Circle. And what the appraisal district had recommended to us when we used to have a lead to stand on protesting our taxes, they said, lift the lot lines. And then if you ever want to develop or sell off or sell out, we'll reestablish those lot lines just like they are now. So what I wanted to find out is how this minimum, two of the lots or three of the lots are undeveloped. But they have the potential now when we purchase them to be developed. So I want to find out, and I don't have enough copies for everybody, but I wanted to find out how this new minimum lot size, when you increase that, is gonna make our lots undevelopable. Because we held on to those, and here's the dimensions, but we're just now getting that. But just to kind of cut to the chase on this, our house is here, we have those two lots that are vacant, and then our Wilson Circle lot, the dimensions are right here. So, yeah, we just got a little alarmed, because there's no definition, what is a new subdivision? Will be a new subdivision if that's, if we reestablish those lot lines? Yeah, will it make our lots where we can't hook into water or sewer, and basically just devalue them? Because two of the lots that are across the street from us that are not on golf course just sold for $82,000 cash each. And they're not, I think they're smaller than our lots. So that's, they're just wanting any information or clarity on this, and we want to know how it's gonna impact us, and then we've got some neighbors who are in the same situation. So...
So what I understand you to be saying is these three lots are as platted, right? You haven't replatted them?
No, we just lifted the lot lines. That'd be a suggestion of the appraisal's office. So that way, they're one parcel, they show us one parcel on the new map, but when we reestablish the lot lines, or if we ever do, that's the dimensions of each of the lots. So are we gonna, you know, basically lose value on our property? And we weren't even sure why this came up, because we're not even sure where new subdivisions are, or where they can be established in Wood Creek? Because it seems like it's pretty well-built out. And, you know, we just want to get some clarity on this. And then also, you know, how many property owners are affected, impacted by this? It was just extremely vague, and we didn't know what was going on. Plus, if this does mean that properties are gonna be devalued, and they would be really devalued quite a bit now since the prices have all gone up, the sales prices. Then wouldn't that open up the city to lawsuits from people who have purchased properties and aren't even aware that this is happening? Basically, and here's the question, so I don't know who else wants one to answer.
I'll take one. Thank you.
And it shows the dimensions of the lots.
I can make some copies if you want.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't expecting, I understood, for council members, I wouldn't expect.
Give them the sound.
So I have a question. I don't understand, is reestablishing lines? What authority is sort of, it sounded like a replat to me, but I mean, you say it's not a replat.
Well, I'm not sure even what the definition of all that is. It's just when we, you know, years ago, went and went before the appraisal board to try to lower our property taxes. They recommended that we just lift those lot lines, and then we could reestablish them. Have you never heard of that? Well, I think, let's see, is there anybody else that has done that?
Let me stop you for just a second. I'm gonna do a point of order here, and I'm gonna look over here for just a second. My understanding of this process is that Suzanne, you're probably keeping a timer, and each person gets about three minutes. But it's mostly, it's mostly a one-way, like this isn't a dialogue necessarily.
No, it's not a dialogue. What you can do is you can take notes and say at the end that you can... We can take some action based on what you've heard, you can make like a correction in a date or something like that. You can't directly dialogue.
So just, I'm relatively new to this also, but again, just to clarify, to make sure everyone has time, we're not able to sit here and address your specific issue and solve the problem yourself.
I'm saying I'm an example of, I mean, I can speak as a living example of it, because we have three lots. We have two lots our house was built upon, and then we have the lot next door, so we have three contiguous lots. We were getting like two tax bills on the two lots where our house was built. And so we went to the county and said, you know, what's the deal? They didn't say, you know, lift lot line, that's like, you know, you can replat, I mean, you can say, okay, we want to replat this as one lot, and all the lot lines go away. But like, we didn't replat, all those plat lines remain the same. So if we were to want to do something, we wouldn't be affected by this minimum lot size, because it's an already-platted lot. But the minimum lot size, I was really looking at is new development, like in the ETJ. So if a developer came in into the ETJ and wanted to put together a little subdivision, you know, across 12 or across 10, well, then these rules would apply. But if you own a lot, if you own a lot in the city of Wood Creek now, you know, it stays the lot. The way those plat lines were drawn stays the same. It's only, if the county said, no, no, you are now one lot, you're not lot 345, you're lot 3A, then this might impact you. So you would have to know from the county exactly what they did. You would have had to go through quite a bit of an ordeal to do replating.
No, we didn't.
We just called them up and said, okay, we'll just put it all on the list.
And it shows up on the new plat as...
Yeah, ours shows up, you know, on the map as, you know, two lots together, but our invoice shows two separate lots.
Okay, so this does not apply to us or our neighbors?
We would have to look at your, like, your tax. I mean, we can meet, like, over the weekend or whatever, look at, you know, compare, you know, the tax statements and see. Because if yours looks like ours, there's nothing, this wouldn't affect it a bit. My opinion. I'm not a real estate guy, I looked into it, so that's my opinion.
Yeah, I believe this ties in a little bit. I don't know if it was necessarily brought about by the sub-division, but I think part of the concept is if people could join lots, you know, how small can they break them down at the end of the day? And do something that still remains within the character of Wood Creek. Okay, so, and I'll just another pointer, this is planning and zoning. We're required in this commission to discuss anything that has to do with planning and zoning, so changing lot size it does. However, anything that goes from planning and zoning is a recommendation up to city council. And the city council is the one that has the authority to make some sort of action. And presumably, if there were still discontent regarding anything that we discuss here, we make a recommendation to city council. And you will again have an opportunity to have your voices heard and brought to the council, who makes the final decision. Okay, thank you. Any other commentary on minimum lot sizes? Do any of the commissioners have anything else they would like to discuss about the minimum lot sizes?
The public hearings just for that.
Okay. Going once? All right, this closes the public hearing session. We'll move on to item number two, discuss and take possible action on the recommendations to city council for the adoption of exactly what we were just talking about. So to refresh our memories, city council came to us and said, hey, we would like you guys to review these numbers, the minimum lot size numbers, that were developed in conjunction with the city engineers. Because it's a requirement to come through us and then make a recommendation back at the city council to enact that. So that's what our marching orders for this evening are.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we send this recommendation to city council. As it goes.
Did you catch that, Suzanne?
No, sir.
Lydia has made a motion to send this as written up to city council to recommend as written up to city council.
Second back.
Okay, so the motion on the table now is as item number two is written, to send this subdivision up to city council as written. Any other discussion on that? All right, we're ready for a vote.
Vice Chair Lydia Johns.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas Baum.
Aye.
Commissioner Chris Sun Gang.
Aye.
And I'm gonna say aye too.
I'll mark it.
Very good.
Because if I can, just so everybody knows, it will be in front of the city council, April 11th, or, excuse me, April 12th, that's when it will go in front of city council. But what happens now is that they have recommended, and so it's now council's turn to make the ultimate decision, so it will come up again. So if anybody wants to talk again, they can come to city council on April 12th.
Yes, there'll be another hearing.
Yes, there'll be another public hearing.
All right, very good. Moving on to item number three of the regular calendar or regular agenda. We are now opening the public hearing to consider recommending to the city council the adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 156 zoning of the Code of Ordinances, City of Wood Creek, Texas. Same being known as the zoning ordinance, specifically section 156.026 to be titled "Short-Term Rentals," parentheses, STR. For the purpose of implementing regulations for zoning districts in which STR will be prohibited, SF1, 2, 3, 5, and 6, TH-C and DU-1, 4plex, and RR. With regulations concerning inspection fees and permits required for authorized STR use in districts SF4, MF1, and MF2. So this opens the public hearing session for short-term rentals.
Welcome. Welcome. Next comment. As a previous PMZ commissioner, we struggled with developing an ordinance for the use. And the previous city attorney's law, we just couldn't get the degree that we needed to move out and have a definitive ordinance on this. We also got involved in a approved short-term rental on Chatham Circle. And it had been previously approved of another avenue many, many years ago. In a period of a year or two, it became a colossal disaster. It would be a good case study for Harvard Business School, masking candidates. What went wrong, went wrong. The neighbor next door got threatened physically and verbally. And finally, it came before the PMZ, and we pulled that around. Then another one crawled up on Augusta. And it was heading in the same direction. But it kind of feels a lot, maybe because of political reasons, I like it like that. But the experience that we've had has been pretty bad, with the congestion we have, the closeness of the houses. I won't go through all the names, I think most of us know this. But several things that I have been approached with the last two years bear some significance. There's a house next to me that's been rented over the past eight years, seven times, a little over a year. I've never had a problem with those renters. And it was like a neighbor to neighbor. What happens with an STR, a neighbor to neighbor disappears. In a time of peril and disaster, if a neighbor needs help, that's no longer that. A good neighbor neighbor is priceless. You can't put a damn price tag on that. Two years ago, the next-door neighbor, well, we had that terrible February weather. It was on Sunday when ice had formed. And I saw a woman next door, home over with her mother, out there. It looked like they were trying to turn the water off. I yelled at them, what are you trying to do? We'd been told to turn the water off. Well, I slid my ass, excuse my language, slid my ass through that driveway. Not intentionally, but it was slippery. And I got down over the tool to turn the water off. Had that been an STR, no way. Last month, my neighbor Nick called me Jack. I wore it, it's on, there's your work, I'll call you. So I went over there, and it was cold, and I was cold. And what happened is a PPC pipe outside the house in some bushes had been exposed, and it was a name. And they couldn't explain that was never happening. So I called the neighbor of mine, and JJ came over with a big wooden box. I got electric heater under my rug, and went over, plugged it in, and two hours later, Nick called me Jack. God, I'm bored. It had been an STR, like a motel. I wouldn't have known all of that. But the flip side of that is...
Chad, I'm gonna ask you to pick your highlights, we're already at our three minutes, it happens quickly, we're already in three minutes.
But the flip side of it is, if something happens to me and my wife, I can't depend on an STR. And that's the flip side, and I'll just let it go at that. Thank you.
Make sure we get everybody.
Let's see. Sherry Lynn?
Oh, that's Sherry Lynn Lauer, the first, yeah, that's me.
Mike and Kristen Weaver?
Yeah, I didn't know I was signing up for comments. We have something to say anyway.
Wait, what's yours?
We've been here 30 years, and, you know, we're from a small town, we like small towns. You know, and there's a certain character of a town that I think everyone that lives in a small town would like. And it's not a party town, you know, where you're having people coming in, and they don't care anything about our neighborhood. They're here for one purpose, and that's to come to the hill country and have a good time. That's not what I bought into. And so we're very much opposed to short-term rentals. I think it would ruin the character of our community.
Chad? I'm concerned with the way this is written. First off, it's, as I read it, it limits it to SF4, which is where it was before. We had it very clear before, and I think it was done in paragraph 11, and we never enforced it. So now we got about 10 pages of all these restrictions. And where does it say in there that the city's gonna enforce it? And when the city doesn't enforce it? I mean, I talked to all the council members, and I'm talking current and past, and every one of them said they're against short-term rental, and what is going on is wrong. The thing is, then, how come nothing happened? Well, I wasn't involved. But you're a commissioner, you're on the council. And then you ask, okay, well then, who is making the decision? I never got that answer. And over a year, I never got the answer, who is making the decision not to enforce the code? And you can write this and make it fancy, and you got lots of restrictions, I think it's actually overkill now. But if it's not enforced, it's all meaningless. And there's nothing in here that can hold anybody accountable, except for the person who's gonna do the violate the ordinance. But it's so onerous that the council's gonna say, well, okay, yeah, I understand, we'll kind of let that one go. It's good on paper, in practice, the old ordinance was perfect. It said, no short-term rentals allowed, except here. And it was never enforced.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Let's see, those seem to be all of the people who have signed... Let's see, those seem to be all of the people who have signed up. Is there anybody else who isn't, who hasn't signed up that would like to share a couple of thoughts?
Okay, I do.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm Jose Tormo, uh, we live on Spalding Circle, and I have, um, two comments. The first one is that we ran a very successful short term rental in Austin for seven years, um, until we moved here, um, just over a year ago. Uh, and so we have very good experiences, not very bad experiences, with having gone through them. Sure, there are the occasional problem tenant, but, um, the good news is you get rid of those people very quickly. Um, and, you know, if we need to, if we have a, if we incur a financial loss, we incur a financial loss, and we move on. But there's responsible ownership, conforms to all of the city laws, and again, my understanding is, is city laws here basically would absolutely prevent you from being able to do it anyway. There are no SF orders that I'm aware of, um, so it wouldn't make any, you wouldn't be able to do it anyway in this city. So it seems like it's kind of a moot point. The second comment that I have is that, that as a homeowner, um, being, you know, I am responsible for my property, I'm responsible for all aspects of the property, um, and there are already laws and rules about what I can and cannot do with the property, and we would end up, you know, whether, whether I had the power to, to rent it out or not, we already understand what it means to be a homeowner in the area, and what it takes and how to take care of the property. And a responsible operator of a hotel, um, knows how to do these things. And, you know, we're in it for a long haul, I'm not in it to be a party place. We had all kinds of party rules on our property as well, limitations on who we rent to, what the terms were, all that stuff. That's just part of being a responsible business manager. So if you want to encourage business, then great, if you don't want to encourage business, leave it the way it is, no, no, you cannot do this in this town, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna ask someone to do that.
Hold on, just one second.
You can, um, address his first point, that he's not aware of the SF four, you can tell on the map where that is.
Okay, so, just, just for, for, a, a couple of points of order, um, there, there is state code, state code two eleven, um, which essentially says, at least my read of it is, is that if you divide your city up into zones, you, you can divide your city up into zones, and if you do that, then the rules for each zone apply to all the buildings within that zone. However, you can have variances between zones. So you could have one zone with this particular character and function, and another zone with this particular character and function. So that's kind of the rationale for, for our zoning, as opposed to within zones, saying this person can do it, but this, this person can't. This is a depiction of our, of our city, um, the zones aren't, aren't color coded awesomely like they are in some of the other drafts. The SF four is right here, it's, it's, I don't know how many houses are there, but it was, uh, originally built, my understanding, uh, right there where the beginning of the golf course is, for people who wanted to come in for the weekend and, you know, play some golf and stuff like that. So SF four is one zone where, um, STRs are being proposed to be allowed, and they actually are, according to our current ordinances. Uh, and then the other is the, um, multifamily, uh, it's-
Family.
MF one?
Anabotic.
Anabotic, yeah, okay, so the MF and the MF one, uh, where the apartments are. So those are the two zones, or maybe three, but, but those are the zones within our city where, where the current proposal is where STRs will be allowed. So it's not a blanket statement, no STRs in the whole city, it's STRs are allowed in these specific zones.
Right. And, uh, I think there's also, uh, in the old ordinance, it expressly allowed STRs in SF four, but it did not expressly disallow anywhere else. It only made mention of that it was expressly allowed in SF four, so we got the distinction that's right.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Uh, one thing I forgot to mention, the one exception that I think needs to be added is, um, um, sale, rent backs, that would be a short term rental. If, if I sell my house, but if I need to live there for a month or two before I can do it, I need, I would say that'd be an exception. I guess you could do it as a variance, I'm not sure, but I don't sure how you want to handle it. That is one case where I would think of, you could put in an exception for the entire city.
Chad? Chad, uh, definition of short term vacation rental is thirty days or less, okay? So if you rent it back for, for a month, thirty-one days, when you're selling property, you're fine, okay?
Yes, but if you rent it for two weeks, you're not. Yeah, yeah. No, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I just, uh, wanted to give a word of warning, um, the, the big problem that I saw didn't apply to us, but in Austin, there was a, a big reference about, um, people coming in from out of town, buying up a lot of properties, and then they didn't live here, they just had somebody take care of them for them, you know, clean up the, and do the yard, and desk, and things. And those were the ones that Austin had the most problems with. And they actually had to pass a law that, um, at a certain time period, I think it was two or three years hence after the law, that you had to, um, own the property, not just be the tenant, so you had to own the property in order to have a short term with this in Austin. And that did break down, did, uh, eliminate the problem, but I know, I just scanned this phone though, and saw that your ordinance says that a person responsible for the party can, you know-
Just have to live within an hour.
Yeah, well, it has to live within an hour. I don't really think that's good enough, because these investors, they have somebody that's not really the parent of the property, has the property-
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things, um, one, uh, I was here three and a half years ago, when we had a situation with the, uh, the short term rental on Champion Circle, and I made a comment now, and I still shout it from the rooftops, that whenever we have a short term rental, the, the ultimate managers are the next door neighbors. They're the ones that, that bear the brunt of whatever happens, and I remember I still have paperwork from November of twenty nineteen. It was all very well done, with video and audio, et cetera, showing exactly what was going on. Two years ago, two summers ago, I had a situation very much like that. Um, there are people in this room that, that were witness to it, not me, but to the situation as it was occurring. One o'clock in the morning, I live across the golf course, and it sounded like this band was in my backyard. It made me so angry that, um, uh, I called the sheriff on emergency line, they came out, they dealt with it, I went back in the house, music got turned up again at one thirty, I went back out, I called the sheriff again, they came out a second time. So this kind of speaks to what you're talking about as far as the enforcement is concerned. And I don't know how we're going to deal with this really effectively. We'd say, well, uh, the, the, the party back in twenty nineteen brought it before the council, that's how they did it, they, they complained, they brought it before the council. And it took two and a half months. It, it should not ever take something like that to deal with, with any particular one. Last comment is that, 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 the, the city attorney that we've used recently said that we can't not, we can't stop short term rentals, at, at least it's up for appeal right now. So if we were to do anything, the more onerous the regulations are, the better, because that will discourage people. If, my first choice is none at all, my second choice is, that's regulation at the death, so that people will, will be discouraged from having short term rentals, and if we do have them, that we can regulate them immediately if, that night, and an hour wait doesn't tie it, five minutes, because I don't want to have to wait another hour to, for somebody to turn their music down. I want it to be immediate. So if we can, none, but if not, let's, this could be an if as far as I'm concerned, let's, let's, and all kinds of stuff in there.
Here, here.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments before we close that section? Alright, that section is closed, we'll move on to item number four, discuss and take possible action on what we were just discussing, short term rentals. Uh, let's see, I'll start with just a couple of comments from, from some notes that I took, um, and, and I'll, I'll point out to us as a reminder, um, there is no enforcement in our ordinance, because there is no enforcement in any of the ordinances, the ordinances themselves aren't, don't include enforcement, that is a city function, and all city ordinances need a method by which they are enforced. So if someone's violating a parking ordinance, or a sound ordinance, or a trash ordinance, all of those things need to be enforced, but you don't put individual enforcements with the individual ordinances, it's city enforcement of all the ordinances. Let's see, we talked about location, we talked about that. Okay, any other general comments, yes, sir?
Yeah, I think we could start about the enforcement as, as, as you guys are, and we stipulate here, we're gonna have fines of five hundred dollars, two thousand dollars, all that kind of stuff, and it comes down to the city manager, you know, how are you gonna enforce that? I mean, we can't overnight change, change the, the housing problem, actually, with the next door neighbor to back by myself, um, but you can't get the police to sort of kick out the, the renters, okay? So the only enforcement I'm paying for here is the financial enforcement against the owner of property. So you would then go and file a suit every time you get a complaint, or how are you gonna deal with that?
That is something we're currently working on. Uh, currently, the city does not have a municipal court. We're looking into options for municipal courts, uh, but right now, if there is an issue, the only option that the city has is to file this with the Case County Court, since the city does not have their own municipal court. So we're, we're looking at, as a, as a, as a city, how to enforce the regulations already, on the books, because not only is the short term rental, but there's other regulations that we need to look at as well.
So the answer is, you're gonna establish a municipal, re-establish municipal court? Uh, looking into, may need a year from now, five years from now, I mean, do you have a timeline for when to do that?
No.
Should we recommend, maybe this PNC committee should maybe recommend to City Council to put a timeline on that, because I mean, I think two years ago, I think I was there, municipal judge, right?
I, I think you could add on to the recommendation that, um, in addition to the short term rental ordinance, that you also, one of the recommend, one of the stipulations is that they also consider, um, establishing a municipal court for the city as well. And then, um, you know, that way, it can come from you that, hey, this is, we're recommending, you know, the short term rental, um, ordinance, but also, we would, we recommend the city look at also establishing a municipal court, or some function thereof, in order to, um, find and enforce those penalties that the city is able to do. I would, I would suggest, though, that we not necessarily tie them hand in hand, I mean, that's, this, it's a citywide issue, and not recently, the city hired a code enforcement officer to drive around the city, and, but previously. Oh, previously, I don't know. Sorry, that, that system didn't seem to work, I mean, you know, at first we had citizens saying, "We need someone to enforce the code," and the city said, "Okay, we're gonna hire a code enforcement officer," then we said, "Why aren't we paying someone to come around and, and enforce that bully us?" I will say, um, there, there have been discussions about a municipal court, um, with certain members of council and, um, the city attorney as well. So it, it, it's on the radar, now, how soon it can be done and implemented, that's a, a detailed thing, because you just can't up and have a municipal, municipal court with, hey, there's, there's a lot of rules and regulations, um, with the court, within municipality. But the discussions have been made, uh, council knows about it, so.
One other thing, if I may, one other thing that we've been trying to do too, is we've met regularly with the City of Wimberley about a shared municipal court, because they're sort of in the same boat, and so by sharing municipal court, we get cut down on costs and, and achieve what we needed to do, so, um, trying to make progress on that. If we can't do it on our own, uh, to work with the City of Wimberley as well.
But, but just to, to, to give a different example, I mean, right now, we're having a tree crisis, but, and, and we've not been having a tree crisis, and someone sees their neighbor chopping down a massive oak tree, I mean, we've got a tree ordinance, it, it's the same, it's the same, right? Like, someone has to raise their hand and say, "Um, my neighbor's chopping down all his trees," and then presumably someone, Kevin, or, I would think Kevin, is gonna go knock on that individual's door and say, "Hey, sir, you're actually not allowed to chop down these trees."
That's without municipal court, you really don't have an enforcement. Kevin can be as firm as he wants to, but he can't, uh, enforce as a fine, he can, uh, write a citation, two thousand dollars, you'll see the best, but you need to be in front of the court to get that to be enforced. That's what I'm saying, you know, I'm, I'm from a private sector when I actually was working, and that you don't have to spend months and months and months to do things, uh, which tends to be what local politicians and politicians in Washington do. I think us recommending a timeline, I'll say three months to get it done, to get it done, okay? Can't do that hard, I don't think so. And municipal judge does not have to be a lawyer, it could be a lay, layperson as far as I know, so. But, that type of retire isn't down here, why is that, take that charge, I think.
I can tell you this, we do not have the, um, technology for that right now, um, for municipal courts, because when you have a municipal, and I know this is going way off the rails, but with municipal court, you have warrants, papers pro binds, there is, you have to do stuff in a legal and timely manner, and it takes more than three months to set up a municipal court. But like I said, w- we're looking at the different options of that.
Okay, without the fact, you have no enforcement, no legal enforcement, you don't, you have CRO.
We have no final re- remedy, yes, no, you are correct on that. Now, we do dislike the tree ordinance, uh, we do send them, uh, we, we totally change how the tree ordinance is, uh, how the permit is, is handled. We go out there and check the trees before they do, now, if, and, and so we can have documentation, but yes, if something needs to happen, we have to file it in the ESC. You, you are correct in that, in that regard. Okay. I'm happy to entertain a motion if someone would like to make a-
I, I just wanna say one thing as well, uh, before we go to motion. You know, I, I, and I think you, you kind of brought up the two options here, right? Uh, one is, is outright prohibition of short term rentals, and the other is, they're allowed, but we regulate with that, right? I, I think that it's pretty well established that the majority of our neighbors are wanting to not have issues related to short term rentals, short term renters especially. So, you know, the former city attorney was very steadfast that this couldn't pass if we get sued, right? Because the, uh, the courts have mostly sided with the rights of a property owner to maximize their profit and the value on their land. So, you know, that might end up being the chink in our armor if we go for an outright prohibition. Now, um, you know, it's still brand new, um, in the courts, right? It hasn't gone to the Supreme Court, so there's no definitive law of the land, the US Supreme Court, I guess, but, um, you know, so we, we could try to be bold and go in with an outright prohibition, um, but, you know, just everybody should be aware that we will probably face legal pushback, which will of course cost the city money. So just things to think about, you know, it's not just quite as cut and dry as, as, as yes or no, and then just kind of impinging upon that right, right? That I said, um, for, for homeowners, for property owners to maximize their profit, you know, a group of, of- You know, a group of others up here, unelected, recommending that we remove the rights of our neighbors that they currently have is also, you know, kind of an ethical hurdle, at least for me. So, you know, just wanted to put those thoughts out there for consideration as well.
I, I think without the process to have someone say, I would like to do this, how do I do it? A complete ban, I don't think will pass constitutional muster. And I think that's what the appellate courts should tell them. So I, I like your idea of making it kind of hard to do.
And I think, sure. Okay. As we've had our discussions, this is, this has been an ongoing discussion for several months. I mean, we've, we've really tried to work with the attorneys, the new one and the old one. And we've had a lot of discussions about what's the best way to go about it to protect the city and to protect our neighbors. And we've, we've gotten a lot of information that has been very educational for all of us. But the one thing that we were missing in our old ordinance was the wording that it's not allowed in these areas. And then if we allowed it in SF four, there was no permitting or anything that would, you know, apply to them. So also safety regulations. If they're going to use their property as a short-term rental in that area, we need to protect people that are renting in that area too. So these regulations that were, you know, Andy did a lot of research. I did a lot of research. I know several of us did to come up with what these pieces of paper say. And you, you all have had some really good input tonight too and would listen to that. And I, I want y'all to know that we didn't take this on as an easy thing. We took it on as something that we wanted for our city to maintain its character and all of us be good neighbors and take care of one another. So that's what this is all about. And I too agree with Bob. You know, you do become the person who regulates if you're right next door to it. So, I mean, that's, that's what I have to say about it. We did find out that homeowners associations and property owner associations and restrictions in those areas are not as regulated as what the city is. So I actually live in an area where they are banned and they cannot, they're not allowed to, to. But it, and it's going to be up to our EOA to regulate it. So I think what I'm trying to say is let's try to keep the city as it is, a nice place to live, a nice small town. But let's do it in a way that we care about one another and try to live for.
So to kind of summarize, our, our, our tasking, if you will, is item number four, to discuss and take action. So we'll, we'll need a motion. And, and in general, our game plan is to either take what we've got with or without minor recommendations and send it up to the city council or to say, no, we want to totally change this. Let's table this for some other time.
So I would like to make an amendment, okay? Based on the fact that there is no teeth in this enforcement. And I would like to put some fire under the council members to get to the municipal.
Because no motion has been made yet, there's no amendment. So if you want to be the first to make a motion, you can word the motion however you want and you can include whatever you want in it.
Okay. Then what I can do, that's out of this speech.
I'm sorry?
Let me know what I can do.
At any time, yeah. Anyone can make a motion at this time. So if you're ready to make a motion, then maybe take a second and, and write down what you wanted to say so that you then understand it correctly and then you can make that motion.
So just to clarify, we're looking at the motion that we have here. In active act, we can have an amendment to that motion. I thought it was the other way around.
You can, you can do, you can do this and then say your amendment in your motion. So you won't have to have a amendment. Your motion would be to send it to council and whatever your amendment may be. And that's what they would vote on. Does that make sense?
I thought you voted separately on that amendment.
We, we're not, we're not voting on amendment because this is the original motion. So you can make that original motion. I move that we do X, X, and X and have three things in there. So you can say, I move that we send this to council and we do something else. Does that make sense?
I move that we send this to council with the amended amendment on recommending that the city council without, without delay reestablishes a municipal court so we can have proper enforcement on this ordinance.
Very good. Very well worked. I second that.
Okay. So the motion that has been made and second is as written here to go ahead and send this up to city council with the additional recommendation that as quickly as possible, they establish a municipal court such that enforcement can be rendered. Something along those lines?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Is there any discussion regarding the proposed motion? All right. Suzanne, we're ready to take a vote on the motion.
Commissioner Chris Sonnier.
So. And I can address this before I vote. So, yeah, I, I've lived in, in a number of places and I, I've lived in places where, especially in the off season, the non-oral season, it's like a ghost town. It's really not comforting to live where nobody else lives. And, and I do think that the city should find a way to, to put a number of restrictions in place to vastly limit STRs. I like the idea of you have to be the resident of the city to own a SPR in the city, for example, putting other taxes in place, other procedural barriers as well. For me personally, the, the concept that I have the power to remove the rights from any of my neighbors is not something that I can vote for. So I have to unfortunately vote no on this one.
Commissioner Thomas Pong.
I, yes, here, whatever.
Vice Chair Lydia John.
Aye.
Alt Commissioner Carson Whitson.
Aye.
And Alt Commissioner Josh Irwin.
Aye.
And Chairman Dabul.
Aye.
Okay. That is the final item of our regular agenda. Are there any announcements? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. Submit? The meeting is adjourned at 5:57. Thank you.